There's a list there of the Jackson County as well as the Josephine County, Currie County Watership Councils.
And the Applegate does cross two jurisdiction potential boundaries, which makes it a little bit interesting.
Most of us have only one or two staff people. Some of us have very different relationships with kind of other organizations we work with like Illinois Valley, the Soil and Water Conservation District. But in Jackson County, we are all independent 501(c)(3) nonprofits.
And this is what we presented last year. These were figures from 2011, 2012. Some of the grant funding that we brought into the county as projects based on eat of upland forestry projects, projects, in-stream projects, riparian projects, and all of these generally use local professionals or local industry to on the projects. A local match from a lot of that company.
One of the things that makes Watership Councils different from a lot of other groups is that local residents were charged to, were the ones who had to create them and create wars of direct groups and violence and then get recognized by the county commissioners and therefore were considered, you know, recognized, bona fide Watership Councils. And there's only one for each territory that was set up between the state and the county back in the late 90s. And we're charged with having diverse representations. So they're not homogenous groups of just fishermen or just foresters. You're trying to bring together all the different, as many of the different interested in your watershed as you can. So they can be likely groups and a little different because of that mayhem.
And that's one of the things that is so critical to Watership Councils. We're trying to address the issues and needs of the residents and stakeholders in each sub-basin.
This is a list of some of the partners that we have. We are working diligently with the Rogue Basin Coordinating Council, the nine Watership Councils to become a little bit more efficient. But on a regular basis, we will partner with any or all of these organizations at different And the collaboration piece is actually really important. If we don't collaborate, with the collaboration, we can use those as match. We can, like a project that I have up in the Thompson Creek area for irrigation efficiencies, we're working with the Soil and Water Conservation District. And when we start applying for grants, we can use those as match. So these collaborations and partnerships we have are really, really important. And that goes along with Jackson County. Any work that we can get from Jackson County, planning, Jackson County engineers on design, culvert, roads, maintenance, we can use all of that as match to accomplish projects in our watersheds.
We also have absolutely no regulatory authority. We can only work with willing landowners, whether they be public land managers or individual private owners.
What's your criteria for a partnership? How do you determine somebody you should be your partner? Do you decide to just, is there a criteria, like did you have to vet them for an organization that has standing or anything like that?
No.
If they have a stake in the project, like, you know, the landowner would definitely need to be a partner in that. Like if we're doing something in-stream, we need to deal with, oh, you have to view, get their expertise and that. So it's just whoever has a pertinent stake in the project.
And partnerships really vary. They can be something like that. They can be more of just coming, being part of a planning process and coming to agreement that the council will go forth and do some good. But it also can be really an active, ongoing partnership. A number of us have collaborative projects and programs that have been going for five, 10 years with four or five different partners. And everybody has a piece of it. Everybody contributes. And what that looks like depends on whether it's a state or federal agency, or it's another nonprofit, what it is. So it's kind of disguisive. We leverage everything we can to get the work done, whether it's staff coming, funds, in-kind contributions of other kinds.
So the issues we work on are not isolated to Watership Councils. I mean, there's, you know, fish, water quality, habitat issues.
Fuel reduction.
Fuel reduction, public education of those issues across a lot of border, you know, borders of groups, whether it's from the feds all the way down to just individual landowners. So a lot of us have shared goals and most every organization in Southwestern Oregon doesn't have a staff of 15 they can deal with at all. So that's why we're all partnering, you know, Soil and Water, landowners, agencies.
OESU extension.
OESU extension, municipalities. I mean, these are all critical to contributing because none of us can, none of us can do it by ourselves.
Our partners obviously have certain requirements. With the funding that they support us comes necessary requirements, as you would guess. So, you know, a lot of times we're balancing different funding groups and jockeying for different requirements that have to be completed on it. You know, we may have federal, state, and local funding on any given project. And so it makes our job harder, quite honestly. But at the same time, it creates an opportunity for us to become more efficient in the future also of sharing these requirements and doing this better together. So partnership is important.
And a specific example of some requirements that are a little bit different, but the, I think it's American Forest, the Global Relief Program, they are funding for a specific amount of trees. They require that you have to plant a certain amount of trees in a certain amount of time and that's what they are granting you funding for. So we have to deal with extremely specific grants at different times, which makes it very difficult to fund a whole package or accomplish your goals.
The list certainly is diverse.
Of the partners.
I didn't understand your life of the stuff.
Yes.
So where are we at? So the Rogue Basin Coordinating Council is an association of all the Watership Councils in the Rogue, so of which there are nine, Little Ro, Lower Rogue, Illinois Valley, Stream Restoration Alliance of the Middle Rogue, which is based on a grant passed, Applegate, Williams Creek, which is a sub-basin of Applegate, seven basins, which is down here, Bear Creek, Little Beet Creek, and Upper Rogue. So we, there are some issues that we need to get together on that cross our sub-basin boundaries and so we will work together. That's kind of how RBCC, Rogue Basin Coordinating Council, has been functioning over the past years. And we've done various projects that kind of cross those sub-basin borders. And recently, we started doing some other work together. So the main support for operations for Watership Councils is through the Oregon Watership Enhancement Board, which is a state agency. And they have a board made up of representatives of other state commissions and federal reps and things like that. Most of the dollars they, that they dole out are from lottery money. And we passed Measure 76 a year and a half or whatever ago, and a very tiny portion of that is going to go to Watership Restoration. Well, that tiny sliver goes to the Watership Enhancement Board, who then doles it out to Watership Councils and others to apply for council support for just operations that keep us, keep us going as staff. And then also restoration projects, technical assistance, sometimes there's land acquisition, monitoring. I think I covered most of the basics.
Outreach education.
Outreach and education. So they have a variety of types of grants that they provide. The Watership Enhancement Board has determined that they don't, and help me out, basically they don't want to cut as many checks. Currently, there's 89 Watership Councils in the state of Oregon receiving council support.
60 received council support. There are 89 recognized.
89 recognized, 60.
Part, Francis mentioned Measure 76. And what that did was it went from a Oregon Watership Enhancement Board naming a 15-year experiment, which was due to sunset in 2014, from what had been called Measure 66 back in the late 90s. And it, since Measure 76 made the funding and the agency permanent. And so very understandably, they said, well, we're no longer an experiment. We're not just wrapping up what's going to go away in a couple of years. We now need to think long-term. And so they started looking and they also receiving some pressure from some legislators that there are too many Watership Councils in the state. And so they're balancing a number of different forces. They are also getting pressure from other groups such as Land Trust, who would likely get capacity, as they know, Watership Councils and Soil and Water Conservation Districts do. But we are in statutes, we're, you know, FDCDs and councils are listed as who might be eligible. And so they're trying to balance and navigate some of their tricky waters right now. And as a result, what they're making, they're redoing their Watership Council Support Grant Program. And part of it is to streamline the application process. They basically found the same councils year after year, by any method, by any method. So they realized we may not necessarily need to fill out a 30-page application every two years, that there might be, you know, a simpler way to evaluate the same things. So they're trying to make that evaluation more straightforward and clear, less subjective, and a lot less time consuming both for their staff and our staff. And that's one piece. But the other piece is then they're looking at, you know, due to all these pressures, is the scale of Watership Councils appropriate? You know, do they really want to continue funding 60 grants as expenses get, you know, as things get more expensive, that money's not going to go as far as, I don't see those budgets going up anytime soon. So they're looking at over the next five to 10 years, hoping that there will be a reduction in the number of Watership Council grants that they cut, those checks that they cut. And so they're encouraging councils to look at merging. They're encouraging councils to look at partnering amongst themselves more for efficiency, organizational efficiencies and partnerships. And so that's, we were already sort of talking about those things. We kept bumping up against them, but we weren't getting very far. And this certainly was a catalyst.
This is the push. So part of the reason we're here today is not just to tell you what a Watership Council is and what we're up to in case you didn't know, but also to tell you that in the next year or so, we're kind of, we're going to be morphing. And we are being, not only because we're going to be forced to by the Watership Enhancement Board, but we're also getting, we're getting messages from large funders, large foundations, the Bottomless Environmental Foundation, Larry Norton, Lazar. These are, these are funders outside of Southwest Oregon and the Rogue Basin who don't want to be handing out 20 grand at a time. They want to hand, they want to write a check for 3 million. And none of us, single Watership Councils can handle, we don't have enough going.
And we're not geographically merged.
Yeah.
So is that the morph, so the Rogue Basin Coordinating Council, could that be something to model then that you're working to?
We're working on that.
Instead of the nine, instead of the Watership Council, nine Watership Councils, maybe that could end up being.
It could be also, individual councils are talking to each other about the possibility of combining. And we would need your support on that, or you would have to sanction if we do come up with new Watership Council. We would need the sanction of the commission.
Recognition.
Recognition, yeah.
What we're looking at right now with the RBCC is really making it a much stronger hub where we consolidate a lot of back-office functions and also then do some staff sharing possibly. And we're at the beginning of figuring all of that out and bringing nine separate entities together. We have worked together through the RBCC a little bit over the years, so we have a good trust, got well-trust built up and some, and some history of decision-making together. But this is taking it to a whole new level and everyone has different needs and concerns. So we're trying to bring everyone along. I don't know, I'd say it's a little bit organic. We've got a starting point, which is really consolidating, like I say, back-office organizational functions and starting to work on more than that. But we don't quite know where it will wind up in terms of mergers or not. One of the problems with mergers is OEB is saying that if you have two councils getting $100,000 of biotium and council support and you merge, you get $100,000 council support grant.
Which we have a beef with because they want to incentivize us merging, yet we're going to still give you only one pound of beans to eat. It's like, well, why would we want to do that then? We each want our own pound of beans. Stay in our own little separate.
So it's complex and there are a lot of factors. And we're looking at how could we then make up for that loss of funding or could we? And it's probably going to take us a couple of years to sort some of this out, but we're starting to move in that direction.
Yeah, and the funders like OEB are influencing this tremendously and there's still stuff coming down the pipe from them. So like, for instance, if these incentive things, they're going to be talked about that at your June Board meeting and that, you know, that could influence what we do tremendously. So we have to be kind of patient in how we progress from trying to, you know, this is a better time. Waiting for information to come our way.
On the one hand, this particular process, OEB is going to continue that support funding for the next two years at the level that it is right now. So the point being is that there's, this is kind of like, in my mind, seed money, time for us to develop that next step. And again, OEB is helping drive the force, but I think the rest of us are all considering other potential funding sources. And for us to grow, at some point, you know, OEB funding may not be as significant as it is now. So, you know, we need to get to that next level and we have a little time to do that. But you should know about this transition that's going on. And it's not just in the Rogue Basin, it's throughout the state, obviously.
I think one thing that valuable piece that we're leaving out though, is that Watership Councils are grassroots organizations based on local communities. And that's one of the real issues we're having a hard time juggling. How do we become more efficient on the Rogue Basin level, but still maintain that local identity? So if we were to just merge into the Rogue Basin Coordinating Council, we have one board. Who's on it? Are we going to have board members from each Watership Council? Where do we get the representation that's actually doing the on-the-ground work in the Watership Council? So that's one of the issues that we're really having a hard time kind of figuring, figuring out and really diving into so that we don't lose that opportunity.
So I mean, so that, we want to have those stakeholders that are landowners and residents and who are tied to their watershed. But when we start tying people from the Upper Rogue to Gold Beach, boy, that starts getting, the thread gets pretty thin. Though we all have very similar goals about, and you know, that Upper Rogue water ends up in Gold Beach and those fish are coming through Gold Beach and ending up at the Upper Rogue. So, you know, that is what really ties us, but in terms of our, you know, the practicality of maintaining our sub-basin and our home identities and issues and still coordinating on that much, much broader scale is the challenge.
And one of the things we've been getting a lot of feedback through some other area planning things lately is that one of the real values that our partners and other NGOs in the area find in having Watership Councils is we have landowner relationships and we have that local identity. We're not other outsiders coming in. And so that's a really important thing that we bring, you know, value that we bring to the table. And so how do you maintain that, but change scale and efficiency at the same time? So it's pretty interesting.
So.
Yeah, I think we covered most of that.
So we're wrapping up.
Yeah, we're wrapping up.
Yeah. So when we talk to you all, the Jackson County Commissioners, and just knowing who we are is important. And then also, you know, hopefully you can see the benefits through restoration and work and the other projects we do. And I think most of us have something to hand out to each of you, right?
We did that.
Oh, you did that? Okay, I've got mine. To kind of hear about what we all do individually. And hopefully you'll, you'll see that we have some benefit to the county. And in that, you know, we would appreciate, you know, your just good attitude about us and positive input when you come across people who are in the legislature or on the Oregon Watership Enhancement Board. There are local representatives, Dan Thoradike is our local Rogue Basin representative on the Watership Enhancement Board. And you'll come across, you know, ODF, Commission folks who have worked with OEB and things like that. So that's, that's an important thing. And then, and just also, we always like to, you know, we like to do projects and work with the county and the cities and other agencies. And sometimes it can be hard when we're doing restoration, you know, we're not just building a housing development, we're trying to do a project which has public benefit. There's sometimes a lot of challenges to do that in the red tape.
A hundred-dollar fee to find out what permits you need to get to do a project is a little on the extreme side, I would say. But that was one of our recent fees for our Thompson Creek restoration.
A state fee?
No, maybe it was a Jackson County plan.
Well, it's not a fee you have to pay. You can choose to go to a land use consultant and have them advise you about what permits you can do. But if you want to have a pre-application fee so that the county provides that service as opposed to all the private sector, you can choose to pay. It's not a required fee.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just say that we've had a chance to meet with you on a regular annual basis. And I would encourage you that if you are able, we'd love to have you on-site sometime. Come look at some of the projects that are ongoing, get a feel for what we do. I think you'll be impressed. And, you know, obviously, we want your continued support. But more than anything, you know, there may be projects in your neighborhood that could well be used for some of this work that we do. Obviously, you mentioned all the activities and it's an ongoing basis. So please come talk to us, you know, come find out how that looks and I think you'll be impressed.
Do you work through COG or?
Partnerships.
So you do on some projects and?
Yeah, and I do, I do quite a bit because I do a lot of work with the TMDL, the Total Maxx, from daily load issues. And so I work a lot with their natural resources division on water quality issues. And they, they also tend to work more in the Bear Creek Basin. So we have, we're doing some monitoring at the Wetstone Creek. You guys, y'all know where that is? It's through City Med, Purging After the Dam. So we're, and we work with the Freshwater Trust, who's doing the thermal credits with the regional wastewater treatment plant. So yes.
There's our, one of those, we're, seven basins is a little bit more low, we don't work with them as much, but for the Golden Dam restoration, we've been the ones organizing all of the volunteer look days to get the riparian tree plants in. And so we've been working with them a lot on that. I think it's about 20, 25 volunteer days over the last, you know, since the dam came out.
John?
Yeah?
Some operational question I've been worried about. There seems to be a big focus now of bringing the temperature down in the Rogue River withdrawal is working in the riparian area. But isn't the temperature now considerably colder due to the dam releases than it was, say, 100 years ago? I mean, I would think our summer temperatures in the Rogue River 100 years ago would be considerably warmer than they are now before we could control the dam.
Those fall temperatures in the Lower Rogue are definitely cooler now because of the water from the dam in the September, October time period. But it's the other streams that aren't influenced by dams that are, that actually provide the water that makes a difference, actually. So those sides tributaries where the fish are going to get off the main stem.
Okay, so the focus isn't on the Rogue, it's on the tributary?
The focus is on the tributaries.
For instance, in the Upper Rogue, we have a Elk Creek up there. And in the late season, when things, when the water flows go down and things heat up, the water just gets too warm in certain segments and the fish just have to get out there. There's no oxygen for them. So, yeah, that's, and that's in several, pretty much all the tribes in the Upper Rogue.
That's a natural process though.
Yeah, it's exacerbated by a human use of like withdrawal, water withdrawals and things like that. You just make a natural process a little bit difficult.
Similar in Little Beet Creek, of course, we have a great deal of access for irrigation. And so that water removal really limits the amount of water that comes down and obviously that temperature increases. So that's one of our real focus areas, is to maintain a higher volume in there, keep the water cooler. And, you know, we feel it's a pretty significant spawning tributary. So in that trib, you know, we really try to focus on additional water and cooler tents. But it's a challenge because there's a lot of outtake.
I missed a tributary.
Little Beet Creek, tributary to the Rogue down there.
Yeah, the other thing is that, you know, there's the very obvious direct in-stream water withdrawals. But we have a larger population and we have a lot of wells out there. And that affects groundwater, which also affects creeks. And, you know, so there's a whole lot of human impact that has sort of changed the place in some way. And so that's another factor. But, you know, one of the things I found was really interesting, I just recently saw some photographs from early 1900s, which were showing riparian areas that, we tend to think things were in much better shape back then, but it wasn't always the case. There are a lot of areas along the Rogue itself where the riparian areas were stripped. They've actually regrown a lot since then. There were people were farming right up to the edge. So there was probably less shade actually than we think there was back then. So that may have been somewhat altered temperatures due to our manipulation of the landscape as well. I don't know for sure. But I was really shocked. It was very striking to me because I was looking at reach of the Rogue. And I was looking at it now and I was looking at it then and going, wait a minute, I would think that would be better than this. And actually, if we were carrying shades, we'd better than that.
We had more fish back then.
There were more fish back then.
But, but it's a process over time, a period of time, even if you had impact back then, you're still going to experience those impacts.
Have other fish for like one, five years.
But you can also have high temperatures in the lower areas that cause fish kills. And there's all kinds, the problem is.
And overfishing and this whole lot.
The problem is the total number of variables that affect fisheries or any other.
It's not an overnight process that, that a species is lost. It takes many generations of those fish that live five years. It doesn't happen overnight.
One of the biggest impacts has been actually straightening of those tributaries. And so the issue of the pools that they were able to reside are gone. And so juveniles are swept away, you know, in springtime. So there's issues that, you know, we can improve those creek areas, we can allow those fish to come back and reside, but, you know, we have a lot of elements to work on. And that's what some of this restoration work is discussing.
There's an article that I, or some information I gave to you in the Applegate. And Thompson Creek is one of those examples. In 1964, after the flood, one of the landowners took a D-9 right down Thompson Creek. And all it did was remove pools, remove sediment, and it increased the speed and the velocity of the water moving down the stream.
Was that one of your projects then on Little Beet Creek to down in Dedmon?
That was actually Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife did that. We were a part of it in the replanning process. But no, they focused the work themselves and did that in Dedmon. And that's another area you should go take a look at. The plants are on the riparian are really grown up. They put a lot of woody debris in, they have a number of new pools. So there's a stretch there that instead of straight, and this is one of those straightened areas, is now meandering. And I think that's going to be a big success. So take a look at that, it's real accessible.
So Watership Councils were spawned by the Oregon Plant for Salmon Waterships. So really, a lot of our issues have to relate to fish and watershed health. And being salmon have such a complex life history, you know, they're born in the tribes for the most part, they're not born in the main stem for the most part, they're born in all these tribes, including Bear Creek, which now has Chinook spawning on the south side of Ashman by North Mountain Park now. So these trips are vital. We couldn't survive, the species couldn't survive just on that main stem. And then they have to swim, you know, when they're this long, is what I teach kids, hold out your finger. This fish has to swim like 130 miles to get to the ocean and then live for a few years and grow to be, you know, I got a 60-pound kid in front of me, I say, it could grow to be about as big as you, give it a Chinook. And then they have to swim 130 miles back up and do it all over again. So this is a very complex species. It's not, you know, a spotted owl tends to stay in one area. This is an animal that spawns multiple habitats over hundreds of miles. And there's a lot going to happen in those hundreds of miles sometimes. And so while we focus on that species though, we feel as, when we do our watershed work and our restoration and our education and our, and our fuels and forestry work, is that it actually though has an impact, not just on fish, but on the economic and the social fabric of a region that, you know, do we want to have a natural resource base? That's always, you know, when I'm on the Enrak with John, and, you know, we talk about that. Do we want to have natural resources and important species like fish remain important and have an impact, you know, as well as the rest of watershed, timber, water quality?
Air quality, water quality. Water quality, water quality.
Right. So while fish, we talk a lot about fish, really, our intent is at the bank, let's be honest with you.
And the formation of watershed councils in the Oregon plant was around salmon. But the Oregon Watership Enhancement Board, as well as most, many councils are moving more, have moved more and more in the whole watershed.
And the governor's office.
And the governor's office. Because they've realized we can't just focus on a stream because there's so many other impacts. And so they're encouraging a whole, a much more holistic approach now than they were in the nineties. So it has all evolved, and it will keep evolving.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your presentation and your work. And I guess you'll keep us tuned.
Right on, see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A reminder also, on Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30, BLM is holding a presentation by Doctors Jerry Franklin and Norm Johnson, who's regarding the Pilot, Thompson Pilot Joe projects. It could be very interesting also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is agenda for music. We'll move to item number three. This has to do with the proposed surcharge and the next steps in this discussion is going to be led by council. Rick, you're on stage, buddy.
Thank you. So I have a staff-prepared version of a draft ordinance for a jail operations fee. And so I can, right now, take a look at it. You can go through this as quickly or as slowly as you would like, depending upon your preference. But I thought I'd just maybe touch the highlights of this particular proposed ordinance. And I want to emphasize, obviously, staff has done this. It's a proposed ordinance, and it's just that. This is the start of the conversation about board policy decisions on what the fee should look like. So I don't want anybody, you know, who's listening today or anything else to think that this is board-approved at this point. It's simply a staff proposal.
Excuse me, is Mark and Eric, are they part of this discussion or are they for something later on?
They're here with some...
Oh, okay. All right. I just know. All right.
Thank you. So this draft ordinance is proposed as a referral to the voters. Because it's a fee and not a tax, it's legally permissible to implement this without a vote. The county charter only requires votes for taxes, but fees can be implemented by the board without a vote. However, based on individual feedback from the board members, it's apparent that the board would like to see a community vote on whether this, excuse me, fee should be imposed or not. So the draft ordinance generally follows the ordinances in place in the cities Jacksonville and Medford. But it does have some restrictions that make it significantly different than what the cities of Medford and Jacksonville have. We'll talk about those in detail later. So the Jacksonville ordinance was used as the basic framework because it's been reviewed by the Oregon Supreme Court, and the Oregon Supreme Court has said that that ordinance is constitutional and it's not a property tax. So we follow the guidelines set forth in there to make certain that it ends up being a fee and not a property tax. So again, I want to emphasize, it's a draft ordinance. It doesn't necessarily reflect the policy decisions that the board would like to implement. But this draft will be changed based upon the feedback that you provide today or any subsequent session of discussions that we had regarding this. And this is, again, the start of the conversation. This is not the product that will necessarily be in front of the voters later this year. So let's kind of walk through this draft of the mechanics. So the jail operations fee as proposed would be a monthly fee imposed on, did I, you guys have that? So yeah, kind of start at the beginning of that. It would be a monthly fee imposed on each unit of improvement within the county. The fee would apply only to improved properties, developed property, where you have people and buildings and structures, most of the things going on, that are not the same as for an undeveloped parcel. So that's one of those things that can constitutionally approve by the court as well. So what's a unit of improvement? Well, it includes both residential and non-residential units. Residential units are those that provide complete living facilities with permanent provisions for living, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation. For multifamily residential properties and condo properties, each unit with a complete living facility will be considered a separate unit under this proposed ordinance. Transient lodging facilities like hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts are not considered separate residential units by the specific terms of this ordinance as proposed, even if the rooms have complete living facilities. So they're basically kind of exempt, even if you had an arrangement where you had a suite and it had complete facilities. So exempt as proposed in this ordinance. For home businesses, those are treated as part of a residential unit and not a separate non-residential unit. So it's treated just as part of that residential fee, and there won't be any double fee associated with home businesses. So non-residential units include structures, basically the balance, that are not primarily for personal domestic accommodation. So those include business, government, and commercial enterprise activities. Again, I want to emphasize, it does include governments within that. It includes for-profit and nonprofit businesses, so it kind of runs the gamut of all of your typical commercial industrial business types of activities. And like I said, includes governments as well. So if there are numerous separate businesses or functions, and I emphasize the word separate, within a structure, for example, an office building, or perhaps a strip mall or something like that, each business would be considered a separate unit as we've defined this in the proposed ordinance. The person responsible for paying the fee is the person having the primary right to occupy a unit improvement. And so occupy includes physically residing or conducting business, kind of somebody who's actively engaged there. It also includes the right to occupy a location. And that is in the ordinance for two reasons. One is it will make somebody responsible for the fee, even if the person is gone on the first day of the month, that's when the fee gets imposed. So you don't get to, everybody leave Jackson County on the first of each month and nobody owes the fee. So it's that right to occupy that's important. And that also kind of clarifies a landlord's responsibility. Landlords are responsible for the fee, excuse me, are not responsible for that fee if there is a tenant who is occupying the premises as well. So if you have a lease with somebody and they're obligated and they have a right to occupy, landlords would not be responsible for that fee. The idea is to make one person or entity responsible for each unit improvement and not any multiple or overlaps.
Do you want questions during your presentation?
No, anytime. Actually, I'm sorry, should have said that.
No, I mean, I just wanted to...
No.
No, it won't disrupt me at all.
So if you have a question, please ask.
Okay, so regards to this last, this last point, so, and I'm only going to use it because Ferguson owns several buildings in town, okay. So if, in fact, he has a tenant in a particular office space, and that tenant does not pay, is he responsible to pay then, or do we, as the owner of the building? Or is it, do we go after the tenant who did not pay?
You know, that's a great question because it kind of emphasized that constitutional issue that we talked about earlier. And we would not go after the landlord. This is not a fee that's imposed on the basis of ownership. It's imposed on the basis of that right to occupy. So if there's a tenant in a particular structure or building, the tenant is responsible for payment. We don't look to the landlords, except in the case where they don't have a tenant. If you don't have a tenant and you're landlord, then you are the person who has the primary right to occupy in that case. As drafted.
Very interesting. I mean, so if I own an empty building, I have one tenant, let's say I have one tenant in my building, I pay for all the spaces except for the one tenant?
If they are separate. They might not necessarily be separate. You could have an office building, for example, that is structured to allow some flexibility in terms of how many separate offices there are and separate functions. So it's just as likely that if it's one of those malleable types of units that are adjustable, you may only have the occupied space and the unoccupied space. So it's going to depend upon the nature of the building and the functionality of that building.
How would we justify that? I mean, just, if that's an empty building, an apartment, that's empty spaces.
You don't have to justify it. If you don't want to do it, we don't have to do that.
No, I'm not asking you a question. This is a discussion, right?
No, no, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. This is, it's designed so that each separate unit has a fee. And if you don't want it to be structured that way, it could be changed. But that's the way the city of Medford structures theirs. That's the way the city of Jacksonville structures theirs. And that has been approved by the Oregon Supreme Court. So that's kind of the direction it took. And when you ask about justifying it, I mean, you justify it because that building, even if it's unoccupied, still creates, completely unoccupied, it still creates the potential for criminal activity. And criminal activity creates the likelihood that you'll need some jail space to deal with that. So that's, so the distinction is between developed and undeveloped. It's pretty clear that the undeveloped has minimal public safety issues connected with it. But once you have a structure on there, then you do have an increased potential demand for public safety services, and in this case, including the use of jail bed space.
Okay, I think, did you have a question?
Well, I was just thinking about the upstairs of the US Bank, you know, where we had all those little offices already. Really, if that was still the bank's function, they would all be under one roof, so to speak, under one...
They would be one function.
They would be one function. But now that they've divided up into seven, you know, I can see where a lot of tenants would play games with those, you know.
There is that potential. And so as we go through this a little bit further, kind of the implementation policy that we talked about is based upon separate addresses. We're going to be using the US Postal Service. And so, for example, if the bank has a single address, even though they might have some separate functions within the bank, it's still going to be treated as one address, one building.
But if someone else who's a different business has the same address, they're going to be treated as separate. Doug, did you have a question?
No, not this time.
I'm going to...
Take that, no.
No. Hold it, I'm going to sort of listen to the whole thing before I sort of give a next.
So any question, that's kind of the mechanics of the definitions and that sort of thing. There's obviously a little more to go. Any other questions about that at this point?
No.
Okay, so the ordinance proposes that the effective date of the fee would be January 1st of 2014. The, and we'll talk about the election piece a little bit later, but it proposes that the election would be held on November 5th, which would be not the next special election opportunity, but it's the next practical special election opportunity. We'll talk about why later. So it would actually go, the ordinance itself would go into effect as soon as the voters approve it. But the first fee wouldn't be imposed until January 1st, and that will allow some administrative time to figure out all of the details that need to be figured out to basically assess the fee. The utilities associated with the cities obviously have a leg up. They have an automatic system in place to make those assessments. The county doesn't have a similar function within county government, so it's going to be necessary to create something else in lieu of that utility billing concept. So the jail operations fee would be capped at $7 per month for the first five years, plus any increases in the CPIU, that's Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, US city average for all items, again, as proposed. Obviously, that CPIU varies on a monthly basis, but generally, from last year to this year, you're looking at about a percent since 2012. I mean, it can be less, it could be more, as you know. But the idea is that the cost for operating the jail increases actually probably about seven, over 7% per year. So the CPI at least provides some hedge against the increasing costs related to that. Based on post office estimates, again, we were talking about using post office addresses for billing purposes. The number of businesses and residential addresses in Jackson County is about 101,000. So the $7 cap would initially generate about 6.1 million in net revenue to offset the current shortfall between our revenues and our expenses. This amount does not account for some one-time information technology startup costs or the costs of the election. So that's basically kind of your annual operating expenses and the amount it would generate. So under this proposed ordinance, the board is basically obligated each year to not impose a jail operations fee that is more than what is necessary to ensure sufficient funds for the jail. So it's directed toward the jail, and your obligation under this proposed ordinance would be that you not impose more than what's reasonably necessary for jail operations. The specific amount of the annual fee can be lower than the cap that's in place at any time. So for example, if other revenue sources, such as timber harvest, or perhaps some other form of federal funding comes through in any given year, obviously, the board would reduce that fee because it wouldn't be necessary to meet that operational funding gap.
I think it's important to point out here that this year does not fully cover the full cost of the jail.
Well said.
It's, you need to understand that, and that this really only covers about half, approximately, of our jail.
Maybe a little bit less than half, I think.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's also a great point because the individual feedback that we received from each of you was that this was not intended to generate any additional revenue. The focus of this was to fill the gap between current spending and current revenue. And so this doesn't quite do that at $7. It's close, but it doesn't quite cover the entire, over 7 million, Danny, is the gap. Is that about right?
Well, it depends on if the cuts are implemented.
Exactly.
If the cuts are made, it's not. Can I just pull for the purpose of conceptual explanation, the 1213 budget, the jail budget's 10 million, roughly, $10 million. Now, the way the jail budget works essentially is we try to put any kind of funds that we can into it before we balance it with general fund, pretty much what we do with every department. So we have Community Corrections Act dollars that we pull from community justice to help fund the jail that we also wouldn't pull because they'd cause you to backfill the community justice budget by a million dollars, for example. So in the 12, or in the 1213 budget, we balanced it with about 7 million in general fund. But if we didn't transfer the Community Corrections Act, we'd be talking closer to the 10 million in general fund. So the one important point about this is it is a jail surcharge, it will have to go to jail. And obviously, it can't exceed the amount of the jail budget. And there are things, you know, if you look at budget law, for example, one of the reasons which most people have acknowledged that we moved the sheriff and built a new sheriff's office was so we could begin generating revenue with the jail beds that we have. So we have began doing that. We're not renting 22 jail beds and generating nearly a million dollars a year in revenue. That has to go in the jail budget, essentially, right? It can't be, you can't move that out of the jail budget. So that would offset the expense of the jail costs. And we could offset it more by renting more jail beds, which we're going to have 60 available. So we have still capacity to be able to make more revenue for the county without using the surcharge or raising taxes.
Now, I just wanted to make sure we got the point across. This is what I've got to do the whole thing, so.
It's great. And I'm sorry, I had the numbers wrong. So it would be actually a little bit more than half of the total jail operations, at least in the twelve, thirteen budget. Not sure what next year looks like. And as Danny pointed out, the ordinance does specifically say that all monies collected are exclusively dedicated to jail operations. So they can't be pulled out and used in any other place.
Let me do say, the jail operations include the cost of collecting the money and distributing it, however.
Do that get boring?
To be able to collect the money, you have to bill for it, and that's a billing for the jail.
Right.
And you have to disperse it, and that's a dispersal for the jail. The jail doesn't do that themselves. Our accounting department does. So the fee supports the jail. Jail operations include administrative costs.
And so, I think it's also a good point out of that, because we're talking about this, it's for the jail, we're just about to talk to you about that. What this is, is a gap supported by the general fund. Supported by the ready day fund. Well, okay, the reserve fund. So by, if this should pass, if this should go, and go pass, and we decide to do this, and then it should pass, the, the, these fees go there. So that allows then, that gap, or right now, that we're trying to fill with our ready day fund, could be used then for those other issues or made cuts.
Yes.
So, so people don't argue and say, well, I thought this was just for the jail. Well, it is for us, for the jail. We're trying to fill that gap.
Right.
People probably aren't even understanding that I just need to talk.
So general, general fund monies that are now going to the jail can be.
From the ready day.
Can remain and serve other general fund functions, or frankly, anywhere the board thinks that money should go.
But when we clarify on any of that, this is not a net gaining revenue. The funding that is currently going to support services that exceed operating, where revenues or expenditures exceed operating expenses, is going to be gone, right? It's not going to be there anymore. So we either cut that amount of services or.
So for the first five years at least, it's going to be a seven dollar maximum plus a CPI. Under this proposed ordinance, the maximum fee could raise to ten dollars plus a CPI in that sixth year. So again, discretion.
In the sixth year.
In the sixth year, yeah. So the first five, maximum seven. And so, what, sorry.
The, the raising of that fee in the sixth year, what, what would be a triggering point? How would that happen? What, what would be, does the board coming and saying the rate would be?
So this will fall under your fee ordinance. You adjust fees every year. Some you adjust down, some you adjust up. We're talking about adjusting it down. The seven dollars or the ten dollars is just a cap. So that tells about you will never exceed this amount.
Correct.
So each year, the board, and it's not even the budget committee that does this, it's the board, budget committee recommends a budget to you, but you adopt all the fees in the county in your fee ordinance. So this would be part of that adoption.
And actually, if I may qualify a little bit, Danny, this is kind of a recent nuance. In discussing this with Shannon Bell, finance treasurer, she basically says she'd like to know what this fee is going to be before the last minute. So the ordinance does say that you should make this decision about this fee, not later than May thirty-first, again, as proposed. Because Shannon says, June thirty's too late for me. I, I need to know this because of the extensive billing associated with it. So in answer to your question, again, just to emphasize what Danny said, it's a board decision about whether to impose even a CPI. It's a board decision to determine what the maximum amount in any given year, the fee will be. So it's board decision in all cases, not budget committee, a board decision.
So let me add just even a little further clarification. The Organized Statute allows you actually to change fees twice a year. It allows you to add a new fee at any time of the year, but it only allows you to either increase or decrease fees at those two times a year. You actually have a fee ordinance that's more restrictive than state law, which says you'll set them once a year, but you can add a new fee at any time. So the comment that Shannon made essentially is saying, you can add this, but you can only change it once a year. You would still adopt it as part of your fee ordinance for the coming year, right? But it wouldn't be implemented until the date that, you know, in this case, you're implementing it January first. So any fee changes, you would decide during the year as part of the fee ordinance, but it wouldn't be implemented until January first. So she will know, I guess Rick's clarifying the importance that she would know that. She would know that. You would know it well in advance whether you're going to raise the fee or not. One thing you may want to consider, and one of the reasons why I was told that you wanted us to do the research on this, is you want the flexibility to be able to lower this if you get OMC reauthorization or other timber money. So you may consider revising your ordinance to allow you the flexibility of adjusting fees twice a year. Because a lot of times when we put the budget together, the federal government budget cycle runs different than ours, October first to September thirty-first. And we don't know, in this budget, for example, we have budgeted roughly in the coming year thirteen fourteen, or fourteen fifteen, thirteen fourteen, we budgeted a timber harvest of a million dollars essentially. But we don't know. We may get a reauthorization in October, November, December, January for three point five million.
And we're stuck in the fee structure based on the, on the.
Well, you wouldn't be in this case because this isn't going to go into effect till January first.
No, our current fee structure would be stuck in that.
Right. So you may want to consider, you know, revising your ordinance to allow you to comply with state law, rather than being more restricted than state law.
Is, is that something that we could have the discussion under this topic, or we have to set up another?
No, I think it goes, Hannah.
It would fall under this.
You, you, the issue, the biggest issue is, you know.
The fee ordinance.
By, by having a county charter, you can be more restrictive than state law, you just can't be less restrictive. So if you wanted to change it to four times a year just so you could have the option to evaluate what other revenues that may come in, you couldn't do that.
But you have to be twice.
It's legal for you to only do it once a year, but you have the flexibility by state law to allow you to do it at least twice a year.
And actually, a late addition to this, in fact, this morning, when I was looking at this, was something similar to that. I'll need to tweak the language, but in anticipation of just what Danny was talking about, I added a sentence this morning that basically talks about being able to adjust it mid-year based upon changing revenue circumstances. Recognizing, as Danny points out, you don't know until November one, excuse me, October one, that you have some federal revenue. You should have the ability probably to adjust that fee, to compensate for that additional revenue. Obviously, in any case, it cannot exceed the cap that's in place at that time, but.
And so, would it be smart to put a clause like that in this ordinance, or would it be better to change the ordinance on the fee structure to allow the multiple times?
You'd better change your ordinance.
Or keep it out of this.
Right. This, this ordinance really, you know, you can make it as complex as you want, but really what you want to know is do people want to pay a fee for these services or not? You're, you already have the other structures in place. You have state law that talks about how you collect and what ordinance is. You have ordinance of about seven fees. So you really, you know, what you're, at least what I understand, if you want people to vote on whether or not they want to pay the fee, then you go, both that's the, the question there. So it'd be more inclined to say, that's adjusted in the other ordinance to say, twice a year, and then reevaluate our fee structure. So we have revenue coming in, we must have higher fees, like what we were just talking about.
Okay. So this maximum, excuse me, the jail operations fee, again, as proposed, and as adjusted by the CPI, cannot be increased without voter approval. So it fixes the maximum amount during any given year by initially the seven dollars for at least five years plus CPI, and then the, beyond that, it would be maximum of ten dollars plus CPI. Administrative details, Danny made a reference to keeping this as straightforward as possible, voting on. So this measure, if the measure passes, the administrative details will be covered in regulations, rules adopted by the board after its approval. The rules would include things such as collection administration and all other activities related to the ordinance, so billing, payment details, all those sorts of things. The ordinance specifically references the board would be authorized to establish an appeals cross, an appeals process, excuse me, to make sure the ordinance is evenly applied. And it also, the ordinance specifically asked that the board adopt rules to allow persons to claim financial hardship. And so the board would define exactly what hard, financial hardship is and develop probably some sort of standard that's based on a, a compliance standard that's set by perhaps state federal or something like that, so that there isn't a lot of administrative work associated with determining whether someone actually is in a condition of financial hardship or not.
Right. To that point, I know we discussed that. Is there, is there, is there something that comes out from the state that, that, that kind of defines that? I mean, I know you have what defines Medicaid and such, but is there something, because that's what I would, I would want to see. I want to see something, a definition, so we weren't going through. And it becomes very subjective. Like see something more objective before determining that. Is there something there?
There's actually a number of different standards, both at the federal and the state level, that could be used. And I think that's a conversation that we have later as to which standard the board thinks best reflects financial hardship related to this. You know, and so, yeah, there are a number of those. And that is the idea that we should tie this determination to a standard that somebody else already has, so that county staff are not burdened with that administrative responsibility to, you know, look at a whole bunch of forms and assess those individually. Hopefully, we have some sort of approval process that's tied to a state function, some type of state function, that could be utilized to have someone verify that they are in fact.
So we have.
It, it, it doesn't even just have to be one function. I mean, you know, there's, well, you talked about Medicaid, but let's take organ health plan. If your organ health plan qualified, you get a determination letter saying you qualify. If you get, you know, WIF, women and children are qualified, you get a determination letter. If you get welfare, if you get organ, there's all these standards. You could, you, by policy, would set the standard and level for which you wanted people to be able to qualify. And then you would determine whether you wanted to implement a sliding scale for that based on the level of income or whatever, or you just want to have a waiver. That would all be done through your approval of policy. Because the question is, do you pay the fee or not in the ordinance? So those types of, I mean, he mentioned a whole lot of things that require a lot of detail work, the administrative piece, how often we bill, when we bill, who we bill, how we bill, how we get the names of people we're billing. All of that we will provide, because I'm sure the public will have questions about all of that, we'll provide to you as part of a frequently asked question scenario. They're not necessarily something, people are voting on whether they pay the fee or not, but how those things will happen. And we are, we are working on that. It's just, it's pretty detailed for some of the stuff like the indigency or, you know, financial hardship standard. And that'll be something you'll determine. And it will be something that you can certainly notify the public on before an election. It's just, we don't have it prepared today. We just have the ordinance prepared today.
And so one additional advantage to leaving out a bunch of those administrative details and effectively etching those in some, is that it's going to provide flexibility to the board when you encounter problems with respect to the implementation. If it's fixed in the ordinance, you can't change the fee, but you will have the ability to change aspects of the ordinance. But the focus here on the administrative details is that you can implement those by board order. So you don't have to wait for what amounts to a seventy-four day period to adopt an ordinance, which is fourteen days to adopt and then a sixty-day waiting period. So the order process will make this as flexible as possible to allow you to administratively implement the voter's will here. So we thought that was the best way from an administrative perspective as well.
And we, we don't think that you'll be passing a whole bunch, you know, of board orders because you have ordinances that already drive most of these administrative aspects that you passed. So and there's state law that, you know, for example, if someone doesn't pay a bill, if they owe the county, we can turn it to collections, right? We can do that with this too, if they owe money and don't pay it. So it's not something that you'll have to do. It's already existing in state law. But we'll provide that explanation of that and frequently asked questions so people are aware and understand that that's the intent. But I'm just saying, it's not going to be like, you're going to be passing order after order for most of this stuff, because almost all of it is existing within your current, you know, ordinances.
But the big piece that isn't, as Danny pointed out, is this whole billing mechanism and how that's accomplished. We don't have a comparable function really anywhere within county government. So we're going to need to deal with that, but via board order.
So, and just to clarify, we would not do it as part of the property tax process. This is a completely different process.
So significant differences, and maybe I should follow, and again, the main reason for that is this is not any sort of fee that goes toward property ownership. This is about occupancy of units of improvement. So that's why it's separated as well, because the tax system is obviously predicated on buildings against property ownership. I mean, that's, that's why it's there. And this has nothing to do with that. It's a fee based on occupancy of those units of development.
Or potential occupancy.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the right to occupy even if it's unoccupied. You're right. As proposed. So however the board wants to handle that is perfectly acceptable to stay. So what are the significant entrances, differences, excuse me, from the Medford and Jacksonville ordinances? Well, obviously, one of the key things is that this ordinance will not take effect unless it's approved by the voters. In those other instances, those were adopted as fees and imposed without any voter approval. So that's, I think, probably the biggest significant difference. There's also no increase in the caps plus CPI without voter approval. So it, it's being fixed over time as to what that cap could be, unlike Medford and Jacksonville, which can periodically change the ordinance based upon the needs as the council proceeds at any given time. In, in the county case, as proposed, the board cannot impose a fee that's more than necessary to fund jail operations. So you've got that qualitative judgment that the board will make about that.
Which will be supported by factual.
Of course, yeah, yeah. And as Danny said, basically, it, it's money that goes to jail operations. And finally, a big difference is this ordinance, I actually glossed over it earlier, allows for a three percent discount for annual payments, or basically for payments for twelve months in advance. So that's much like the tax, the property tax thing where you get three percent if you pay it, you know, in December, and then the discount decreases after that. So this would allow for a three percent discount. And the reason that's appropriate, I think, is that there's actually costs associated with billing, and that three percent kind of reflects the cost savings that the county enjoys as well. So somebody who's been in their home forever and know they're not going anywhere for the next year, they may want to pay a year in advance, write one check a year rather than quarterly, if that's the billing method that's looked at procedurally. So.
They save two hundred and fifty dollars, or two hundred and fifty, two dollars and fifty cents by doing that.
Two fifty, too? Any questions about the ordinance? I thought I'd talk a little bit about the election process and next steps, but ordinance questions?
Yeah. Basically, as I'm understanding, this landlord is not responsible for the fee unless it's unoccupied, and the landlord will be responsible for the fee. And you mentioned earlier that the cities are really getting that respect, that they're trying to typically fill water meters, if I understand it. Does that fee go away with the city when the water's turned off? Because a lot of times, those landlords will shut the services off and then reestablish that once a tenant is in the building. Did the cities stop the fee at that point in time?
Let me tell you, I received a mixed message on that, at least with the city method. I'm not sure what city Jacksonville does. The code itself, to me, as I read it, indicates that if you shut the water off, the fee goes off. I've anecdotally heard some stories that were different than that. But generally speaking, it's associated with utility billing, and I believe, in the city of Medford at least, that those surcharges go away if there's no one responsible for the meter billings.
So how would that work in this particular case, where there's? So how would that work in this particular case where there's no... So they have to turn the service off, and they have to, the fee just automatically goes, or how's that work?
Well, uh, we're...
Hearing several different...
No, no, it's actually, it's, it's the same thing. The person responsible is not the person who's on the water bill, which could be the landlord for a one-hundred unit complex. Uh, so it's not that person. It's the person that is in the apartment or the condo.
I also heard a little while ago, if I'm not mistaken, that if those unoccupied occupancies are potential in there, that fee will still go into effect, the landlord, you know, building or the landlord have to pay those.
That's correct. Because that's a unit.
Right. But there's no shut-off mechanism, so to speak, even though the cities have that shut-off mechanism where they don't pay the fee.
They may have that shut-off mechanism.
And elected here on...
Yeah. Well, uh, and so, you can have it any way you want. Uh, a- as I said, the ordinance anticipates, right now, as drafted, to provide the ability for unoccupied to be assessed the fee. If you don't want that to happen, we exclude it. It, it's that simple. This was, uh, drafted to make it, uh, kind of as, you know, as inclusive as possible, but within some very reasonable bound- boundaries, staff believes. So, so anyway, a, a policy decision, exactly, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I think the logic, and it doesn't mean that you have, I mean, this is, I, I, it doesn't matter to me the way, which way you go. The logic is, you know, and really, if you think about it, an occupied, unoccupied dwelling is gonna have more likely to have a...
Right.
Same kind of response. And, you know, that landlord's gonna want whoever's breaking into that, you know, apartment that they're, have the primary right to occupy, to be arrested and put in jail. I mean, I'm not gonna show up and go, oh, you didn't pay the, uh, surcharge this month, so we're not putting this guy in jail, sorry, right? So, I mean, that's the logic. But it's, it's as simple, as Rick essentially stated, to say, hey, if it's not occupied, no one's being built, uh, as it is to say whoever has the right to occupy it is being built. It's not...
So speaking that, in a way, saying for, you know, I said there was a hundred and some, a hundred thousand units plus.
Hundred and one thousand addresses is, is what we know.
And, I mean, obviously, uh, the, the greater the number, the, the lower we can keep the multiplier to get to where we're trying to get. I'm wondering, out of that hundred and one thousand, would you say would be, uh, any idea on a percentage of, I, I was gonna flex, but those would be unoccupied?
You know, can I look over my shoulder here and see if these numbers crunchers have an idea? Cause I have, I have little idea.
We got a little...
Well, I mean, we know that the numbers are coming from the U.S. Postal Service, and we're assumptions that most people are updating their addresses when they do move, but we don't really have any idea how many might be unoccupied, other than that these should be current addresses. I think on the Board of Realtors, we probably have the best information, they generally track occupancy rates, so that might give us some indication. We would have no way of knowing a good exact number.
So the postal service, uh, I think, you know, I'm, I'm concentrating mainly on, on businesses, but every address within that office building has an address, so as far as postal services, whether there's anybody in there or not, that's an address for, for the postal. That's, would be one of the numbers that would be included, correct?
Yes. Yeah. I would lose out.
Okay. Just, okay, I just...
Here's the deal, and that's essentially also why there's an appeals process, because, you know, we have no doubt that we can set the structure up to facilitate this, but people are gonna have to be able to come in and say, I disagree with what you're, you know, you're sending me a bill for this, and here's why, and I don't think I should pay this. And there may be the circumstance where, you know, you have one business, uh, that occupies a building and has four suites, and they may have different addresses, but the post office puts in a suite A, B, C, and D, and they're gonna get billed four times. They're gonna come and say, whoa, 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 this is one business. I have it listed as suites because I want individuals who work in my business now to come directly to them. And then we'll say, okay, this, here's the evaluation process, and yeah, you're, in that case, you'd be right, we'll correct that. So, we're gonna have some corrections in the billing system. Remember, you know, there's two hundred plus thousand people that are hearing that. It will not, uh, automatically be perfectly refined. Uh, we did, for purposes of computation, estimate an eighty-five percent collection rate. Now, for property taxes, we estimate a ninety-five to ninety-eight percent collection rate. So, we accounted for the possibility of having some vacancies and some appeals and for people not paying, um, and that is reflecting those numbers. So we did have an allowance for some of what you're concerned is, and that's an estimate of, so, we won't know until we actually get some experience.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I have a question. There, there's a number of places around the county, I'm sure you've seen them, that are maybe zoned R, R five, where you have the primary house, and then they've moved in a relative or somebody in a fifth wheel. And so, really, in theory, both of those should be paying that fee. And so if we do that and collect that other fee, does that trigger code enforcement action then? Because really, that's an unlawful use if they, you know, pulled in another, you know, how do we address something like that?
Well, I mean, we send out property tax bills every year to businesses that are not operating legally within property laws, right? Because the accounting department doesn't go look into the property tax data records and say, did they come in and get an appropriate approval for their land use?
Oh, well, I don't know that.
They get billed for whatever they're assessed at. And so, I mean, we have that same issue now with taxes. I mean, people all the time say, well, the county brought, you know, B business, and they've been, you know, provided, I've been providing service to them, and now they're telling me my land's not zoned appropriate. You know, finance pays the bill. They don't, they don't manage proper, you know, land use.
Well, the way I was reading that, though, that's still one housing, if somebody's doing...
Yeah, it doesn't...
I'm just wondering about all the situations I see where they have two...
Well, if you, if you actually have a permitted structure, and it's a, you know, an appropriate use...
Sure, that makes sense.
So that happens, you know, the mother law house kind of thing, and they usually have different addresses, but they'll be billed two, two times. I mean, if you, if you're asking me if they have an unpermitted structure...
Right.
And they get billed, could it trigger a code violation? I suppose it's possible, but we have that issue now. Usually what triggers a code violation is someone reporting that someone's not complying or a safety issue. You know, if someone installs electrical equipment without getting a permit...
Right.
Inspector provides by and sees it not appropriate, then they'll, because of health and safety under your policy, they'll, they'll, uh, implement a code violation. So, um, but I, you know...
That's, I wonder, will there be a new focus on trying to identify as many of those as possible, uh, just for the income?
Well, well, let me, let me see that. As a general rule, the way this is drafted now, it, it's really not after the RV that's temporarily hooked up to the house water or something like that. It's talking about improvements to the land, improvements to the property. And, uh, generally speaking, as I said, the temporary use or even long-term use unlawful, as you pointed out, of, of an RV as living quarters is not gonna typically be subject to this building. It won't have a separate address.
Right.
It, it really is not the type of unit of improvement that this ordinance, as currently drafted, anticipates assessing a charge against. So I, I think the chances of that happening are almost nil, uh, although, you know...
Well, I mean, finance doesn't go out and implement code, they're two totally different departments. I mean, you know, just like property tax, uh, the tax collector doesn't go out and implement code. So, I, I mean, I guess I don't know how you're drawing the conclusion that those two things are intertwined in any way.
Well, there's going to be an incentive now to find those places if there's a fee involved.
The only way, the only way we're billing these places is by the U.S. Postal Service. That's how we're acquiring the addresses. So I suppose if those people go in and set up an individual address, and they have an illegal use, uh, you're, you're telling me that they have an illegal use, right?
Right.
Okay. So are you telling me that if we came upon illegal use, we shouldn't act on it? I mean, are you saying the emphasis is gonna be trying to find people that are having illegal uses? Because code enforcement doesn't go out and decide whether someone pays a bill or not. I mean, finance bills based on the U.S. Postal Service, updated, which is updated daily. Um, and that's how the billing occurs. I mean, there's no, there's no cr- cross between planning and a billing for a fee. I mean, that's like saying animal control. I mean, i- if an animal controlled officer's out at a house, because they get a call and they see an illegal RV, do they cite that illegal RV? Who's parked illegally on a par... No. I mean, they don't have anything to do with it. They go out and take the animal and issue the citation. It's no different.
Doug, you had a question?
Yeah. You, you spurred a thought process in my head. The, uh, we have a, a few long-term or permanent RV parks in the community, and they don't have their physical address, they have a PO box, which actually, so there might be three or four hundred units in there, depending on the size of this place, and you have a PO box. And, and other areas also residents, they use PO boxes instead of taking the billing address for all their, um, correspondence. How would that play into this process?
You want me to answer?
Go ahead.
So first of all, transient occupancy, we are excluding. And a hotel, for example, sometimes will rent someone a room for a year...
Yeah, this isn't transient.
But I'm using this, well, but we're considering a transient. I mean, an RV park, just like we're considering a hotel transient, even though someone may live in a hotel for two years. We're not billing. We're, Rick went over the exclusion. Those are excluded. Period. There's no way that we could go out to RV parks and knock on everybody's door and figure out whether they've been there a certain amount of time or not. Now, when you send a bill to a PO box, someone's gonna have to come in if they don't wanna pay the bill and tell us why they shouldn't be billed. That's why we have an appeals process, 'cause we will bill all of those addresses. So you'll get billed if you're, you know, rural route and you choose not to take, no, you're rural route, and you take a PO box, you're gonna get billed. And you're gonna be expected to pay the bill under your ordinance, unless you come in and say, you're billing me for something and I shouldn't be paying. Because, you know, a PO box is usually associated with either a residence or a business, right? Now, you could just be a person that doesn't live anywhere and doesn't have any developed property or be, be billed otherwise. If that's the case, you're gonna come in and explain that, and we're gonna stop billing. That's the way the ordinance is drafted. You could have it another way if you, you want...
No, no, just, just trying to...
But essentially, you know, as I said, we expect there will be an error rate. I mean, with utility bills, there's an error rate, and that seems like it should be pretty easy. Um, but, you know, a lot of times, people will move out of a house and not have the utility shut off and not pay them for months, and, and the cities will continue billing, right? And landlord will go, I don't know this, this was in those people's name. So even with something so solid as a utility bill, like, I don't know if it was you or you who brought it up, I think it was you, there's still, there's still an error rate. We expect to have an error. I mean, we're gonna have people come in and say, you shouldn't be billing me, and here's why. And, you know, we need to be able to, and that's why your ordinance allows for that, essentially in appeal process. Now, do we think it'll be a great error rate? No, we don't. Do we think there'll be some people that will try to figure out how to not have to pay the bill by doing something like we're talking about? Absolutely. Will we catch every one of them? No. You know, will some people get away with it? Yep, they will. They do it now. So...
And administratively speaking, in my conversations with City of Jacksonville, uh, they have been refining the process as well. As I said, this is the same general framework as in the City of Jacksonville. And, uh, so it isn't only based on the, the water meter. They don't just count the number of water meters, and that's all the bills they send out. If they are aware of an apartment complex, for example, that has multiple units, uh, they figure that out. Obviously, Jacksonville is a lot smaller, uh, and they're able, probably among city staff, to identify most of the problems in, in those multiple units. A, a lot more complex problem here in Jackson County, uh, just by the sheer numbers and geography that has to be covered.
For the ones, and, and this is helping to cover about half of the billings, for the ones that already have that system in place, it'd be easy for us to verify. So, the City of Medford and Jacksonville already have a surcharge in place, and actually, I think Talent has a library surcharge in place. They've verified all of these things already. So, you know, a good portion of this is gonna be very easy, easily verifiable, in addition to the fact we'll have the updated records from U.S. Postal Service. And, you know, the more rural areas are gonna be less complex, because you're gonna have less two-hundred-room apartment complexes, you know, in Bulldale. So, the, the, the big, the big one, obviously, is Medford, and because they already have a surcharge in place, that's gonna be pretty easy for us to verify. And that will be where most of the work is going to be, because that's where most of those multi, uh, occupied dwellings and residential units are, really. Um, so, we, once again, we look at all these things, and we think there are barriers and that we'll have errors, but we do think it's, you know, something that we can refine if the board chooses to do it. And if you don't, then you won't.
So the election process, if that includes questions about the administration. So, it would be, could be held at either a regular primary election, a general election, or a special election. The next available special election dates are September seventeenth and November five of this year. September seventeenth is almost impossible to meet because of some timeline details. Uh, basically, it would require a referral to the voters not later than June nineteenth. So the, the timeframe is so compressed, it doesn't seem very reasonable. So November five is a target, I think, date, if the board wants to pursue this and if the board wants to do a special election. And, and the advantage of that November five date is that if the state refers any matters to the voters, there's talk about some tax issues, the state will pick up most of the cost of that special election. So that's a huge plus for the county, and there wouldn't be a September seventeenth special election for a state issue. So, uh, November five seems to make the most sense as a target date. Uh, so a November five election date, counting back, uh, all the, the times would, uh, basically require s- a referral date of not later than July twenty-fourth. So that's kind of the timeframe we're working under. In terms of estimated costs for a special election, uh, the total costs are estimated to be anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that would include a voter's pamphlet, a county voter's pamphlet on the issue. So that, that just, uh, a ballpark for the cost, and I got those from Chris Walker, the county clerk. Any questions about election process? So next steps then are, uh, basically direction from you, how do you wanna proceed?
Hold on, let's go to one more thing on the elections. So essentially, generally, when the county passes an ordinance, we don't refer it for an election. Um, this would first go through your ordinance process. So he talked real briefly about counting back. And really, counting back is the time that it takes to implement an ordinance with the public notice, the public hearing. So you would have really multiple weigh-ins from the public on this. In the ordinance process, some of the things you may have questions about, the public may also have questions about, and you may hear things from the public that cause you to want to amend it in the ordinance process, even if you were to agree with whatever it is, finally, you agree with, if you agree with it. Um, and so the public would have the opportunity through the ordinance process to come and give testimony during the public hearing process, which would shape how you would then either pass or not pass. But assuming you pass the ordinance, um, it would be effective, most ordinances would be effective sixty days after the passing of the ordinance. This one would have a provision that it would only be effective if approved by the voters. So it'd be more than sixty day, it will be at least sixty days till the election. I think it's exactly sixty days, right, for that to update?
It's actually ninety days.
Okay, I'm sorry, nine. I'm sorry. The election requires nine days for referral from you. Your ordinance process requires sixty days till it could be implemented, if you didn't go to an election. So I'm sorry, it's ninety days. Um, and then, you know, so essentially, it wouldn't be effective even through ordinance process unless approved by the voters. So I just want you to, to know that. The public will have multiple chances, not just to vote, to actually weigh in, potentially shape what you may or may not refer, or dissuade you from referring it even, so...
Through the public hearing process, yes. Okay.
And, and, in, in contrast, cities essentially hold the public hearing process and implement. Right? So if they don't, they don't go through, they don't have an election, and as Rick said, you're not required to have an election, you're choosing to have an election.
Frankly, I think, uh, the city ordinances may even be adopted without public input. Oregon Public Meetings Law, uh, is a public, uh, basically a public, uh, it's not a public participation law.
The, the adjustments, the adjustments are made that way, but the actual ordinance has a public hearing process.
So, as I said, kinda, kinda next step, I, I was gonna go through that ordinance process as well, and opportunities for public input in there, but Danny's covered that. And so I think what staff is looking for is where you'd like to go with this. So we could have discussion today about the pros and cons of this. You could adjust this for a while and we could have some additional input later from the board regarding any changes that you think should be implemented in this, initially. And then effectively, at some point, if you wanna move forward with this, you'd give a thumbs up on an ordinance. And I actually have a very, very rough draft ordinance right now, but I'll probably wait to distribute that until I get some feedback from you on this specific language that we shared today. And so really, the process at this point is defined by two things. One is the ordinance process, and the only qualifier there is it requires two separate meetings, at least thirteen days apart. So we're basically two weeks apart. And the second thing then is your direction in terms of how you would like to proceed with this process.
And let, let me say something that Rick probably wouldn't say. And I'm not trying to pressure you to make a decision either way, but there's more to this process than just the ordinance and the draft ordinance. So we would have to prepare a ballot title, a twenty-word summary, a thirty-word summary, a hundred and...
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five word explanation. All of those things take time. So even though Rick is telling you the cutoff date is July, what was it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. For us to be working on it means we have to have it ready by July twenty-fourth. So you couldn't decide July twenty-fourth if you wanna do this. So if you, if you choose to not proceed today, that's great, but we would hope that you would schedule it fairly quickly so that we can either continue to work or not. Because if we can't do these other functions concurrently to your decision process, we can't have them ready.
Thank you.
I don't want to say anything.
You're gonna throw a ball in my court. I can't see how you guys are. Hey, you know what, I'd like to do that survey. I'd like to get the survey out there, get an idea of what the, the people want, put the questions together, ask the question to the public, and then have that input before I see a draft ordinance in front of me. Because I'd like to know what the people think.
My concern with that is, is that, just let me, my two cents worth, okay, is that we, I think we're decided that we wanna do a survey. I don't have, I, I agree with that. My point being is, is if we wait to get that done, get the results back, that's really gonna push us up against the timeline. So I would rather see us decide, well, let's, let's, or direct staff to go forward with it if in fact the survey comes back and just bombs.
Well, here's the deal.
You say no more.
We, we, I have got a couple of quotes from the survey companies, one that we used for the library, which made you ultimately decide not to pursue that, and from a couple of other providers. The problem with doing it the way that you say is, to develop the survey, we need to know the language so that we can ask the questions regarding whatever it is, the ordinance is you want us to pursue. The que, the, the survey isn't about would you support this or not, that's not it. The survey is partially about that, but then it's also about, well, what concerns do you have with what the board are doing here? So if we don't have an ordinance to work from that you guys have said, yeah, that's the general direction we want, or at least the general direction we want you to go, we can't formulate the questions to see what people might be concerned about and what you might be asking. We can ask generally, is this something you may support or not, but that's not a survey. I mean, that's a, you know, so for example, if people say, well, hey, I have a problem with, I don't have a problem with most of this, but I have a problem with you charging a landlord when no one occupies it. That may choose you to decide, you know, cause you to decide to change that in your ordinance. But if we don't have specifics about what it is you're proposing, it's hard to get people's opinion.
I understand, I was under the impression here that a lot of what Rick just went over was the concepts of the draft ordinance. And I thought that was quite substantial information.
No, it is, as long as this, but you said you wanted to wait to do the consensus.
Yeah, but I understand this to be the baseline of what that ordinance would look like.
Well, that's your, that's what we're asking. Is, is that what we, if that's what you understand, then that's what we're asking.
That's what I understand. So that survey could basically be constructive, based on the information you just gave me.
Yep, it could.
Getting the information, that's what I was understanding here. So before, using that baseline of what you just talked about, before I have a final draft potential or something, you know, I have a draft here that I'm looking at, I, I was under the impression we could do a survey based on that and then move forward.
And, and you're right. What, what you first said was you wanted to wait to make a decision on this till you got the survey. If you're telling me we can use this to do the survey, that's what we need to hear.
Yeah, that's my assumption, based on this information I received.
I didn't know you were seeing that, so.
So I would like to see us make a decision on this today. If we decided that we didn't wanna pursue this, we're gonna waste money on the survey. Why do the survey, you know? So I think that we should, we should make a decision on this. And then if the survey proves that, that this isn't viable, we wasted the money on the survey, but we, at least we haven't wasted it on an election if we choose to not put it on the election, so. Anyway, and I'm not a fan of more fees certainly, but this is a double-edged sword. You know, if we don't do this, we're gonna start cutting government services, you know, county services, and drastically. So, so I am in favor of us, I, I guess what I'm saying is a yes. I would like to see us proceed with this, with the survey. And if the survey is favorable, then we'll put it to the board.
So with that, oh, to, to answer, I think Rick's question, do you see any passages? Are we gonna use this as a general? Are you agreeing to use this, this?
Yes.
This basic?
Yes, and actually, there's a lot of questions in there, collection and this and that, but we can't address all of those, like we said, right now, you know. They would just confuse the issue of, you know. Now, if they have the direction to proceed with this basic format here, I think that's so.
Okay, so that's, that's right, it is your question, isn't it? Is this?
Yes.
And I think Danny's as well. I, I think unless we know, as you pointed out, what the baseline looks like, you can't do the survey and you can't get that input, that that would be valuable in terms of shaping this ordinance to address any concerns that are there.
So do you see anything here that's immediate? I know, I know, I'm asking you, Doug, but I'm asking you now. You see any heartburn in here?
No, I, I have no issues with your draft.
But let me do say, the, one of the reasons why we began working on the frequently asked, now this is test, on the frequently asked questions piece, is because there's all sorts of questions the public are gonna probably have about, you know, what are you gonna do if I don't pay this? How are you gonna collect it? What, what if this, what if that? So we wanted that to be prepared, so if we do a survey, the survey company can look at that and compare it with the questions they're asking with regard to the draft, to give you some input about how, if, if either this is flat out, not got a chance, or it could be successful if you look at these things, or, you know, it's marginal and here's where you need to provide education to people, or just plain forget it. But I do want you to know that even though all of those things are a lot of things, we will have answers to all of those questions before you go to a vote. So we're not advocating you don't inform the public of those things. We're, we're saying that the question to the public is, do you wanna pay the bill? All of those mechanics, we'll provide all the information for how that works. I just want you to know, we're not, not addressing those, and especially not just for you guys. I know you probably know that, but I mean, for the public purpose. And we'll pretty much try to answer every question we can anticipate. And then as questions come in we didn't anticipate, we'll get answers for those as well.
Okay, Doug?
My, my concern is that we're spending a lot, it's gonna be expensive no matter what, however you look at it, which potential costs a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the value, or if the state doesn't have a, a deal. I understand what you're saying and I under, and I understand the concept of moving forward, but I think you pointed it out also, just like the library's ultimately decision was made not to go forward based on that survey and, and the big picture on that. And I, I'm leery of dumping a whole bunch of staff time and dollars into that upfront, not knowing what the public thinks. And because we are having this heavy budget cycle, we're making proposed cuts. And I hate for them to think that it's a public perception here is that it might, maybe that we're making all these cuts, but then it's okay to spend money on increased fees or taxes. So I, I'd kinda like to see where the, personally, I'd just like to see where that survey goes before I wanna spend a whole bunch of money.
Well, I, let me answer please. Let me answer please. I, I understand, I understand that the situation is, is we're trying to work out a solution to our, to our financial issues. And yes, I, I don't wanna spend any more money either, but, you know, we could, we could just do it. Okay? I mean, we could just do it. We don't have to, we don't even have to even take this to, to the voters. We've decided that we wanna be good elected officials and present it, and present it to the public, to get their feet to it. So, so it's because of that, we're spending this. Okay? So, but the, my point is, is that rather than just say, we're gonna sit here, we've already gone through the budget process, we're gonna finalize it on the twenty-ninth of May, we're making cuts, and so what was made, what we're trying to do is trying to propose a fix, if you will. So I'm for going ahead and moving forward on it. We'll, we'll do the, we'll do the survey and if it's overwhelming, and, and the library, it was overwhelmingly, no. It wasn't close, maybe, kind of, so, there was no. Okay, we'll wait and see that. But I think we need to move in parallel, because I'm, think if it's presented right, it would be a yes, or at least, so. Anyway, I, I don't wanna wait any longer and I'm ready to move forward.
Let, let me say, I think you all are saying the same thing. You're saying when the survey comes back, he said it, you said it, you all just said it different ways. What, but I do want you to know, we're not gonna have any more cost than the cost of our time, which you're already paying to prepare this stuff. I mean, we're your employees, whether we're working on this or we're working on something else. So the cost comes if you decide to defer for an election. The, I, I did get the, the quote on the survey, I think it was between twelve and, I sent it to all of you, twelve and twenty-some thousand or thirty.
Twenty-five.
I mean, it was pretty, it was much more inexpensive than I thought. So we will spend that. However, the budget committee did set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purposes of facilitating this. So I think you will have the answer before the big cost comes and you'll have the opportunity to make that decision if you choose to. We see you.
Okay?
Thank you, that's all I have, and I appreciate your direction.
Thank you, Rick.
Good job. Good job if you as well.
Thank you. Thank you for all of you guys' work on this, gals. All right, John, twelve-seven, I think.
Kelly was here.
Kelly was.
Kelly was here. I talked to her this morning, she said she was gonna be here, but she said there was really nothing to report of.
She, she was actually here hoping to report on a planning issue that's coming before you, but it wasn't noticed, so I told her that she could not do it.
Okay. Okay. All right, with that, we'll, we'll close the general session.